We're going to be.
Cool FM Live, Mary Moran at the Benson City Council Meeting. A full house opposing the proposed massive one hundred and seventy-five square foot, one hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot aluminum processing plant on two hundred acres at the southern gateway to Benson. Let's listen to public comment.
Because you don't live within city limits doesn't mean you're not affected by the city's actions and what goes on in the surrounding communities. Everyone is for jobs in our community. Nobody's against them. But most people commute and others do what they can locally. Just because there's ninety jobs that are going to be created, that doesn't mean that the locals are going to be qualified to hold those jobs. So therefore, they're going to be brought, people are going to be brought in from the outside area, or they're going to be contracted out by the company. The biggest issue here is the water with ADI trying to come in. The city of Benson in two thousand and twenty-four used five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, or sorry, five hundred and fifty-nine acre feet of water. For those of you who don't know, that's three hundred and twenty-five thousand eight hundred and fifty-one gallons. That's enough water to cover one acre of ground, forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty cubic feet, one foot deep. According to an ADI employee, the cooling towers hold eighty thousand gallons, two percent evaporation rate. Cooling tower is the least effective way to cool anything. That math comes out to two thousand five hundred and eighty acre feet of water a year. According, that is four point six times what the city of Benson used in two thousand and It's also been reported by ADI that they claim to use three hundred gallons a minute, with one hundred and fifty of that going back to the wastewater treatment plant in Benson. That's a continuous use of one hundred and fifty gallons a minute. At that number, you're still talking about a usage of two hundred and forty-two acre feet of water. That's roughly forty-three percent of what the city uses on an annual basis. That leads me to a series of questions that I believe everybody in this room deserves answers to. How much water does ADI actually intend to use? Where will the refused water go and will it be free of contaminants? Who wrote the Community Development News piece in your packet on page one forty-nine, dated July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and it's also posted on the city's website? Usually, pieces have an author or an originator. That one does not. What would cause the city to say no and stop the ADI project? How much money has been invested by the city to assist this ADI project? How much money is the city planning to spend to support the ADI project in an ongoing basis? Are there any waivers or incentives offered or provided for the ADI project? Exactly what permissions have been granted by the city to whom and when pertaining to ADI? And how much did the city pay for contract services to recommend this project? Who proposed and supported the ADI venture? Where did the ADI idea come from? Is our fire department properly equipped and staffed to respond to an emergency facility such as this? And the conditional use permit to ADI was recommended on three conditions: traffic study, emergency response plan, and water conservation. Has the city received an update on any of these conditions? I want to let the record show that I'll pass out these questions to council members and the members of this community deserve some answers. Ultimately, the decision affects us all: politicians, members of the city, and members of the community alike.
Next speaker, we have Ms. Goine, President.
Hello. I spoke to you at the last council meeting. I think I was perhaps the first person to speak to you about this aluminum dynamics project. I had learned about it six weeks ago, just from something someone posted online. I was like, this is happening? I hadn't heard anything about it. I started researching very quickly, found the two hundred, no, the one hundred and ninety-three-page application for the Title V from ADQ, couldn't understand it. So I started researching for people that helped me understand it. And I came across two people, and one of them was Stephen Riddle, who's been fighting environmental issues in Arizona since nineteen ninety. He understands these things. And he reviewed that and said, wow, this is not a good idea for Benson. I'll write the city councilor's an email. So when I spoke to you five weeks ago, I was encouraging you to read that email, his analysis. So he has been doing this work for thirty-five years, and this is a quote from one of his emails. He said, "This would be one of the most polluting facilities in terms of toxics and risks that we have ever seen." So that's after doing thirty-five years of environmental work here in Arizona. And I'm pleased to say that I confirmed with him today, they have, he and his people really know what they're doing, thinks this is a really bad idea, and they've never lost a lawsuit in their thirty-five years, because they get their details really accurate. And so, since I spoke to you five weeks ago, at that point, I thought, actually, this project had to go through the city council. Then I learned that it didn't, and then I learned that it happened in the P and Z. And then I went and I looked at the minutes of the P and Z, and I saw that there was no questions, there were no discussions. Then I went to the minutes of the so-called community, you know, awareness meeting, have some friends that attended that. And in that meeting, there were only twenty people, and probably at least five of them were staff, you know? So clearly, the word didn't get out. And that's why now, if you turn around and look, we've all become aware of this in the last five weeks. And obviously, people, by and large, are not happy about it. So I, I'm, in that community meeting, the president of Aluminum Dynamics was asked, "What's going to come out of your stacks?" And he lied. Now we know that he knew at that time that they were required to file this ADEQ Title V permit, and that they couldn't even start to build their plant until they got that permit. And the only people required to file for that are companies who are going to be putting toxic stuff into the air. So what was his answer to what's going to come out of your stack from a community member? He said it was warm and clean. Warm and clean. He lied. He knowingly lied. So my request, and I think a lot of people in here would agree with me, is that we have another community meeting. And at that community meeting, we're not lied to, and we want to see, everybody's been doing a lot of research, so a lot of people are a lot more informed than what we were five weeks ago. And one of the things that's, that's really important is to really get the truth and have a chance to have another vote. Okay? I mean, that community meeting, they had to have it. It doesn't qualify. Twenty people came to that meeting. That tells you, it wasn't adequately, it wasn't adequate notification, and then the president of the company lied. So, and the other quick request I would ask is those three reports that they had to, the company had to submit to the city for their conditional approval. I was told two weeks ago by a city employee that you all had just received it, those three reports. I know multiple people that have asked for those reports, and as of today, I hadn't heard of anyone who'd received them. So as people that live and are going to be dramatically affected by this plant, we need to see those reports.
Good evening. I would like to refer you to ARS Title thirteen, Section eighteen oh four, under Open Meetings, Exceptions, Notice, Agenda, and Policy Statement. Arizona's open meeting law mandates that the public bodies hold meetings that are open to the public, meaning the public has the right to attend, observe, and listen to the deliberations and proceedings of these bodies. A meeting defined as any gathering of a quorum of a public body where they discuss, propose, or take legal action. Violations of this law include discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda and taking legal action in closed session. Several online sources have stated this conditional permit, conditional use permit, sorry, for Aluminum Dynamics was voted on quietly in November, and there is no visible agenda available on the city website after the November sixth planning zoning meeting that can validate a public meeting was held by city council. Therefore, any permits or conditional use permits issued in closed meetings shall be considered null and void. Please also refer to ARS Title nine, Section four six two dot oh four, Public Hearing Required. Aluminum Dynamics issued a public notice in the City of Sierra Vista newspaper, which is more than thirty miles away from Benson and can only be accessed with a paid subscription. The law states if there is no municipality, it should be posted on the affected property in such a manner to be legible from the public right of way. And in at least ten public places in the municipality. As of Thursday, July tenth, no signs were visible anywhere on that property. Therefore, ADI is a violation of ARS nine dash four six two dot oh four, and any public notices issued outside the municipality of Benson, Arizona for ADI should be considered null and void. Aluminum Dynamics is currently breaking ground at this site with any conditional use permits posted on their grounds. If the city of Benson believes Aluminum Dynamics is so beneficial for our community, then why won't they talk about ADI on their social media page? If the people of Benson are not ignorant, nor are we giving any one of you who are sitting in these positions of power. Your authority does not give you permission to break the law. It's time to assume responsibility for your actions and remember that Benson is clean, Benson is beautiful, and we, the people, intend to keep it that way. Thank you.
Good evening, Kathleen Kinney Haynes, South Stellac Tight Circle, Benson. Mr. Chairman or Vice Chairman? Okay. Council members. The proposed San Pedro site, thank you. The proposed San Pedro site for the Aluminum Dynamics plant is designated business park or industrial use by the Benson General Development Plan. Therefore, changing the current light industrial use to heavy industrial use is consistent with the zoning land use chart of the plan. However, to address some plan inconsistencies, it would be necessary to develop a gateway entry site along Highway eighty at the intersection of Fourth Street. Maintain view sheds of the surrounding environment along Highway eighty. Prevent contamination of groundwater. Maintain the integrity of night sky viewing and the high-level air quality. Minimize non-compatible land use activities near the San Pedro corridor. Make preservation of all natural assets a consideration in the analysis of development approval. Expand employment opportunity north of Interstate ten and emphasize industrial growth in the airport vicinity. The appellate court decision in Haynesville City of Phoenix requires any rezoning to be in basic harmony with the whole land use plan. Even if the above actions are taken, there are several other areas of the plan that need to be acted upon before, before basic harmony with the plan can be established. A zoning change of this kind at this time would result in a change to the plan of such significance as to impact a substantial portion of the city and its planning area. Consequently, a major plan amendment is necessary before zoning can be established. On the other hand, if this project is found feasible, the airport industrial park site, which fulfills the core needs of the project such as trucking and track availability and industrial use zoning, would not have these inconsistencies and disharmony with the plan that the San Pedro site has. There are many other issues, many other issues may arise from the proposed project. But by moving the project to the airport industrial park area, these inconsistencies with the plan could fly away, and the result could be a win-win for the community and the applicant. But if you don't put this heavy industrial usage development into the area that has been designed and planned for such use, you will have forever defined the character of the city of Benson's historic downtown as nothing more than a gateway to an industrial recycling plant. Thank you.
So as was said earlier, very eloquently by a fellow veteran of mine back there in the crowd, I'm going to reiterate what he said about the city Benson government works for the people. You serve the people, each and every one of you. We do not serve you. And as you saw last week, I'm sure all of you have not, I'm sure you all saw the video last week in the inappropriate behavior on behalf of the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He fired the first salvo when he told a lady in the audience, "Good luck with that," when she said, "I'll just contact the district attorney's office." He set the stage, sorry, what?
Attorney general.
Attorney general, I'm sorry, attorney general. He set the stage for the us versus them attitude. This is why we're angry, folks. This is why we are PO'd, and I'm trying to be polite here. It's that kind of behavior. We're angry also because of the covert nature, as has already been said, I'm not saying anything new here, of how ADI was brought into this city. It was brought in under the radar, just like when the Indianapolis Colts left Baltimore. They did it under the cover of night, and that city was mad. And that's why we're mad. You're bringing poison into our city, our area, beyond the city limits. You're taking our water, and we don't get a say in it. That's why we're angry. And that is not what your job is. Your job is to reflect what the people want, each and every one of you sitting around this room today. I also want to remind you that the Arizona Department of Commerce, in their handbook on page forty-two, says very clearly that planning and zoning commissions are, quote, "advisory only." They do not set policy, they do not approve permits, they advise only. It goes on to say, and for the sake of time, I didn't print it all out or type it all out, but it does say that only the elected body makes the permit approved. It was already mentioned about the general development plan, but I'm going to reiterate that, too. If we go through with this ADI plan, we're violating the general development plan for Benson in regards to visual appeal, land use, and environmental planning. And again, I would take more than three minutes just to talk about where you're all going to violate that. So my question is, why do we waste paper and come up with a general development plan if the city government wants to bring in an entity, an industry, that is going to be contrary to that general development plan? And Mr. Volker had mentioned earlier two things about tourism. He mentioned about classic cars off Main Street. Do we really think we're going to attract tourists for classic cars when we have a monstrosity down at the Big Curve spewing out of the living? He also mentioned about the golf course. Well, per ADI's permit request, they submitted to ADEQ, and I just read it again this morning, at least that page, and it says that gray water will be funneled off into the golf course. What's going to be in that gray water? We don't know yet, because again, we've been kept in the dark. We have no idea what's going to be brought into our city. So are tourists really going to want to come out there risking having children with two heads or no arms? We don't know what's going to be in that water. I know I'm exaggerating a little bit to make my point, but that's the whole, that's why we're mad. We're not getting information from you, and we're being lied to by ADI. And we're being trolled on social media trying to muddy the waters there. Last thing I want to bring up is announcements and meetings. It's twenty-first century. Why can't we put these announcements on social media? I still use a flip phone, but I know how to use Facebook. I know how to use nextdoor.com. Cojes County makes announcements on nextdoor.com and Facebook. Why can't we? We're limited, you seem like we're only limited to just announcing in the newspaper in Sierra Vista and posting outside City Hall. Well, I didn't get a welcome board packet when I moved here that said, "In order to find out what's going on in the city of Benson, you must go down to City Hall every day and check what the latest is." Guess what? We all work. We don't have time for that. And I'm sorry, but it is modern times. Let's use social media, get the word out, or could that be why we don't want the word getting out? Because we want to do these little things like we're doing with ADI right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you tonight. Sorry, I was just thinking. What I'd like to remind you of is that we all have a responsibility as human beings to manage and care for Earth, its resources, and all living creatures. Never in my wildest dreams thought me, a conservative Republican, would ever say those words or have to remind anybody, because I'm not some crazy environmentalist, or how I would view them. However, I'm a conservative and I believe in conservation, and that's where many of us have agreements. Who disagree politically, we absolutely agree on this. And that's what's beautiful here at this time, is many people that I would actually call friends, but we disagree in certain realms. But when it comes to the lives and safety of our loved ones and our community and caretaking and being good stewards of that, this is where we align a hundred percent. And I appreciate that. And I'm not even from this place, but God led us here. Two years ago, we moved here from the basin of Los Angeles. If everybody could just close your eyes and visualize the basin of Los Angeles, you will visualize refineries all over the place. S.A. Aluminum, who got sued, is in Wilmington, California, which was two miles from my home. Now, the side effects of health problems from these refineries that throughout my life, I taught in L.A. Unified School District, mile away from these refineries and recycling plants, and, and, and. And my students would have major migraines by eleven o'clock in the morning, and we wonder why. Now, this didn't happen overnight to Los Angeles. This took decades to simmer in the grounds and in the air of that beautiful, or what used to be beautiful place, only miles from the Pacific Ocean, the port of L.A., the port of Long Beach, Cabrillo Beach, the Korean Bell, Fort MacArthur. These historically are beautiful and historical landmarks, and it's been completely desecrated by irresponsible people, not of today, but of fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty years ago. They didn't have the foresight to think about the future generations. You guys have the ability to do that, something they didn't do there, hence the reason why my family is here. We were looking for a place that had pristine water. That was number one on our list when we moved. Pristine. I never heard of Cojes County in my life. But God had a bigger plan for us, and it was here. And we found that pristine water in our aquifers, which are ancient and have been protected forever, until now. So I ask you, do you want this beautiful place, the San Pedro Valley, to turn into the Los Angeles basin? You really don't, because if I stood here and listed all of the health problems that close friends and family of mine have, you would be absolutely mortified. And that is not what we want for here. This is why my husband and I and our two children are here to build a legacy in this community and fight against all of the evil that was done there, so it doesn't happen here. And what I'm encouraged by is by all the people behind me. We left a community that was asleep, unfortunately, but we came to a community who is absolutely awake. They're willing to put the legwork into the, looking at everything, researching everything, asking questions, and questions, and pushing against things that they know are not, not just wrong, they're morally wrong. So I ask you guys, please reconsider. We're going to challenge it all the way, because this is a hill I will die on, because my grandchildren and great-grandparents. We are not moving again. This is home, and we absolutely love it, and we're encouraged by everybody in this town, because they are absolutely beautiful people. Thank you so much. Have a fabulous evening.
Before I share what I would like to say, I have a friend who isn't able to make it tonight, and I'd like to read something that she wrote. She said, "My name is Audrey Vidigan, and I am here to voice my concerns for the moving of that project. I would like to start out by reading the City of Benson General Development Plan, specifically Land and Use Policies, line six, which reads as follows: Maintain the view sheds and dynamic visual appeal of the city's surrounding environment. This can be achieved by designating certain stretches of roadway to be free of large commercial signs and billboards. It's interesting to me that the city is concerned about billboards and commercial signs disrupting the visual appeal of the city. However, the city is now willing to place a massive aluminum plant with cooling towers reaching one hundred feet in the air that will release toxins into the community. That seems like quite the contradiction to me. Not only will the aluminum plant produce toxins that are released into our community, but the plant is placed close to residential area, right next to the San Pedro River, and even more alarming, a short distance from our schools. How is this not a concern for the deciding officials? Please do not sell out this town. You are allowing this greedy company to hold this town hostage. This is a bad idea, and please rethink your action before it's too late. Surely, there are other job opportunities that can be brought to Benson besides this shelter. Do the right thing." I would like to add that I'm one of the few who was born in Benson. I've lived in Benson most of my life. I grew up in the house that my great-grandfather built. I have five kids, kids who all attend school at Benson, in the primary school, middle school, and high school. I teach and coach at the high school. I have strong ties to this town, and I love this town, and I just want it to continue to be a wonderful, beautiful, safe, healthy place to raise kids, especially my kids. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak this evening. Having grown up in a Phoenix suburb, and now having lived in Benson for ten years, I feel as if I have an even deeper understanding of just how special Benson truly is. This is an absolute beautiful area to reside in, and it should be treasured. I am not opposed to growth, but I do feel strongly that the growth should be responsible and appropriate. It should not be a heavy industrial harmful business on top of our river, on top of our schools, and on top of our schools, and on top of our homes. It should not be an industrial business with a horrendous rap sheet of air and water violations. You were told warm air, but clean air. Did anyone stop and do their homework here? Or do we skip that step if the price is right? I know you're unable to provide an oral response for any of us now, but look at all these people here. Look at the signs. We want answers. I have a simple list here of 10 questions that I would like for the council to answer. I'm providing you with a written copy of these inquiries and I will be expecting a response from the city in writing starting tomorrow. I will be sure to email your city clerk a copy as well. Number one, whose idea was this plant? Who proposed it or introduced it? And who are the primary supporters of it? Number two, what incentives have been offered or provided to the city of Benson? Number three, what permissions have been granted by the city council? The mayor and you specifically? And when were these actions taken? Number four, to date, how much has the city of Benson invested in supporting this initiative and project? Number five, what are the projected startup and ongoing support costs for this business? Six, to date, how much has the city paid for the contract services of Christine McLaughlin? How much was spent to use her as a contract planner on this project? Seven, what would cause the city council to say no and stop this project? Eight, what amount of water will be used daily? Gallons per day? Number nine, where would the wastewater go and how will that process work? And our final question, number 10, who authored this community development news piece in your council packet? The one that says, "When approved, not if approved." Let the record show that I'm providing you a hard copy of these 10 questions. Thank you for your time this evening and thank you for your timely response.
Good evening. I'm gonna read off my phone here. I'm 28 years old and I'd say I'm probably the youngest person to speak today. Uh, I'm a US Army veteran who recently moved to Benson. I was born and raised in Tucson and met my wife here. We have four children and we recently just purchased a home here. We recently just purchased a home here in Benson, less than a mile away from the proposed site. I'm very concerned with the lack of communication and transparency from the city in regards to ADI. In a quarter of a century, the parent company has committed nearly 100 offenses totaling an over $11 million in fines. The plant that's proposed would be classified as a major source of hazardous air pollutants. They're requesting a Class 1 permit, Title V ADEC permit. Pollutants emitted from this process include nearly a, at a hun, near or at 100 tons annually of 10 different types of particulate matter. The plant would run 24/7/365 right here within city limits, next to homes, schools, et cetera. So far, it's unclear in the amount of municipal water that we use daily. Some of it apparently will be recycled back into the golf course. Seventy, 74 trucks daily, processing 300,000 tons of aluminum. The 88-foot main, 88-foot tall main structure with taller structures around it. It's proposed to be built right on the San Pedro River, which was, which was one of the last undammed free-flowing, free-flowing rivers in the West. It flows into the Gila and the rest of Arizona. And as an avid hunter, it feeds my family. The company is currently in a $50 million litigation with the last town they tried to set up in. Is this really what we want to bring to our small town of around 5,000 people? There's already a petition going around with over 1,500 people that have signed, and that's a lot more than the citizens review that was held only asking seven people. This needs to be recalled, reevaluated, and revoted on. In another quarter century, this will be a problem that my children and I will have to deal with, and most of the people here won't be here anymore. You guys need to think about the future of Benson. That's all I have to say.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me clearly? Good, good. Uh, as you can see, I'm the only Asian face in this room and I struggle so hard at my spe, English speech 101 class. The fear that speak in public kills me, but the fear that Benson and its citizens that lose this beautiful environment overweight my fear. So I'm here today and facing all of you. And, uh, I'm here to read something my husband wrote. Uh, he's concerned, in addition to all the environmental issues, he also concerned about light pollution. Uh, because both of us are on the Huachupa Astronomy Club and we moved here from Chicago area. And we lived there, he lived there for 30 years and I'm 22 years. Originally, I came from China, the communist China, and my homeland, as you know, is the second economic power in the world. Its land, soil, water is so heavily contaminated. There's people die young from cancer, et cetera. And it's a major concern and the government don't talk about it. And I feel it is so sad. I see the same thing happen here and in a little rural town I never find on the map. And my hometown is 8 million citizens. And I would never come to this place if not for the clear water, the dark sky, the beautiful galaxy, the Milky Way across our head every night. You guys are so blessed by the nature wells that are given by your God. So I actually, I'm not reading the draft, my husband draft, uh, wrote. I just speak out of my mind. And in 1998, actually on September 11th, I boarded the flight, came to the U.S. I can, if this town is destroyed, I can move. I can go somewhere else. But I feel sad for all of you, you Americans that were born and raised in this blessed land, but you don't get. I think it's everybody's responsibility. I'm, I'm a naturalized citizen and I am so happy that I'm here and I, I'm a new face. I'm a, uh, I, I, I don't have any friends here because I'm, I'm new into this town, uh, but I really, really call to your conscience that pre, preserve the way of life that you are given by God. Thank you.
I also have a fear of public speaking, but this was too important to let go. Hello, my name is Kimberly Skolken. I live on the other side of the San Pedro River, across from the proposed plant, less than a mile as the crow flies. My property actually includes a portion of the land behind the plant, as well as a piece of the river in between. If ADI starts operations there, not only with aluminum dust raining down on my property, but my portion of the river, my animals, and my children, when it rains, the toxic runoff will run from behind my plant and from my property directly into the river and head north. You see both my home and the site, chosen by Aluminum Dynamics, are flood zones, registered flood zones. In addition, what doesn't runoff in the gentler winter rains will sink into the ground. Due to the convenient location of my property being right off the river, my well that we drink from and bathe in is only 100 feet deep. How long before I and my children experience the effects of toxins on them, from the emissions, in them, from inhaling them and in their drinking water? We raise and butcher our own animals on our little homestead. How soon before the beef I raise for my family tests at toxic levels for aluminum and carcinogens? How long before our home-raised dairy products do as well? We already have a cancer cluster in St. David due to Apache powder. They had to dig everyone new wells a number of years back and I still lost five friends afterwards. In addition, I just finished fighting with the Department of Justice and seven tribes and several ecological agencies for water rights adjudication, which I have been told will be revisited in the future for my domestic well. Not only has the city of Benson not completed that process, why would they guarantee water that may not last and they have not established their own rights to? In addition, residents in the J-6 area have recently received notice that they are being dropped from their homeowners insurance due to the high fire risk in this drought-stricken southwest desert. Aluminum dust is flammable. So flammable, in fact, that if ADI has granted their ADEQ Title V permit, they have to create a fire disaster plan that's given to our local fire departments. Our local fire departments are volunteers. Why would we risk a plant to be built in the high-risk area, low on water, with voluntary firefighters? What's Aluminum Dynamics gonna say if some of our local men are hurt or killed in a fire, which they have a history of having? I'm sorry? Finally, I keep hearing about the jobs that this will bring. In construction, perhaps, but not one large construction project, even for the city of Benson, has hired local contractors. Not one! And we have many hard-working local companies here! We do not have an abundance of workers with two-year degrees and the skills for the plant. It will be a long time coming before this company can make a dent in our local unemployment. Never mind that we do have a population here that just won't work. There are actually jobs. They may not be great, but they're better than nothing. But even if this dream of jobs did pan out, who in their right mind, with children or grandchildren growing in this community, wants to sell off their health for more job availability? Who in their right mind would trade the water that their community needs to survive for more jobs? And who had the bright idea to put such a plant alongside an endangered river, in a flood zone, on a riparian area, across from a nursing home and a mile from a school?
Thank you, council and the mayor and everyone in Benson. Thank you. Let me try to make this short. I'm another one that doesn't like doing public speaking, but here we go. My name is Scott Drum. My family has served America, Ireland, and Scotland in both war and peace time to defend, protect, stop tyranny, injustice, and corruption since 1746, ending with myself serving our great nation in 1988. I took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and to protect all our rights and our freedoms under that great and solemn document. This plant is the enemy. I'm not against change or economic growth. I'm for small businesses and the opportunity for all to succeed and grow environmentally and intelligently in a sound manner. What I'm against is proven toxic industry destroying the water, soil, air, and protected areas like the river and the aquifers here. I witnessed the destruction of waterways and the environment in Colorado mining areas, New Mexico, Arizona, and Wyoming over the past 36 years. And now Benson is on that destruction list stemming from greed, political and legal discrepancies, and a billion-dollar toxic facility blowing smoke up our skirts. Brief examples: 2015 Gold King Mine, Colorado, three mile, 3 million gallons of toxic water with lead, arsenic, and cyanide, and thallium poured into the unanimous river. Toxic waste into Colorado, New Mexico, Utah waters, and Navajo Nation's water. 1940 to 1970 GE poured PCBs, a chemical used to cool transformers, industrial electrical supplies. 1.3 million pounds of toxic chemicals that contaminated 200 miles of the Lower Hudson River in New York State. 1920s to the 1980s, Upper State New York, acid rain from the smelting of metal, recycling metals from the smokestacks of these places putting out nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, creating acids in the air, killing all the flora and the fauna around the state and the source of the, source of the Hudson River. The list could go on and on. I took from the Center of Biological Diversity Tucson letter to the city, uh, to the mayor and the council planning commission, these are just a few concerns. Approximately 52 tons of toxic aluminum dust will cover Benson over the next 10-year period. Contaminating air, water, soil, destroy federally-protected wildlife habitats along the river, violating federal protection laws. Aluminum dust mixed with the air is highly explosive and flammable. It is a Level 4 danger under OSHA regulations. And I hope this number is wrong, but I don't think so. From this letter, I'm assuming it meant 2,627,400, uh, 2,627,400,000 gallons of water would be pulled per year from Benson well and water supplies. And it's two miles from your school. Let this sink in to you all. On September 27, 1779, enabled battle at Flambor Head on the sinking, burning, undergunned American warship, the British demanded Captain John Paul Jones to surrender. His response among the flames, explosion, and his ship and his crew fighting valantly responded, "Valently responded, I have not yet begun to fight." To the council, mayor, planning commission, the toxic invaders to our county, our town, our state, we have not yet begun to fight. Thank you.
Good evening, council people. My name is Daniel Arnold. I'm a native of Cochise County, resident of Benson. Uh, we are the neighbor to Aluminum Dynamics. We own the old golf course. So we own the old golf course. We have shut that golf course down. Uh, it uses 850,000 gallons of water a year, a day. So, we started to do our part. I represent Daniel Arnold and Associates. I'm a real estate development consultant. Uh, I work for over 30 clients in the state of Arizona, deal with over 100 agencies, cities, and towns. Our job is to analyze projects like this one. Um, I also represent the Cherokee Apache Indian Nation. I'm a Cherokee Apache Indian member. I sit on tribal council. I'm director of Cherokee Apache Economic Development. I'm president of Cherokee Apache Development. I'm president of Cherokee Apache Water Company. We took all the information from this project that we were able to get, which was most of it. We ran all this information past our team of engineers, scientists, environmentalists, hydrologists, um, economic analysts. Uh, before making the statement today, we ran this past all of them. We've been working on this since last year. And at this time, we would like to support the mayor and council of Benson 100% in this project for ADI. So, if you need any of that information from me, feel free to contact me and, uh, we'll be more than happy to share it with you. Thank you. Thank you.
Wow, Topak Dipalo, thank you so much for having me tonight. So, if you don't mind just looking at the people behind me, I want to let you know, this is, I would guess that most people here are not in favor of the plant. Feel free to lift up your science, guys. But this is actually just a fraction of the people in the community. I have talked to so many people. Initially, I created a space on Facebook for people to discuss. I saw that it was overwhelming, some of the chit-chat groups. And I thought, well, that's got to be kind of annoying to admins. Let's scoot over here so we can have an open conversation and learn about what this is. So we've been educating ourselves for a few weeks now, and we are now up to 830 people. That does include, you know, some city people and people that are kind of lurking in the plant, like, you know, people that are pro-plant and stuff. But that is like almost a quarter of our population. And I am here to offer you guys a way out, because I'd like to read a couple things. So I'd like to comment on the warm, clean air. So on November 6, um, the AD representatives said, was asked, "What will be emitted from the stacks? Warm air, but clean air." So I will go ahead and read to you what the truth is, and that is, that is a discrepancy with the ADAQ air dispersion modeling report of December 2024 and potential to emit calculations. The 218-acre facility would emit more than 52 tons of fine particulate matter, PM2.5, that's very small, annually. Much of it likely containing aluminum compounds, along with significant quantities of nitrogen oxides, carbon monoxide, and hazardous air pollutants, including hydrogen chloride. Many of these emissions are fine enough to penetrate into the lungs and bloodstream, and depending on the dosage and frequency, could contribute to serious respiratory and neurological harm. Aluminum dust, in particular, does not degrade and can accumulate in soils, water, and living tissue. Over a decade, the facility could deposit a significant burden of aluminum-laden dust. There is a discrepancy in the information that was given to this planning and zoning. In fact, this is another question that came up. Planning and zoning actually asked the Aluminum Dynamics representative this question. Could this project be brought before council? Well, that's evidence, like, did planning and zoning not know that they had the option to send this before you guys? So I would like to just formally ask you guys to rescind and revoke the conditional use permit that you have granted. I am asking for the city council to consider the one quarter of the population of Benson that is concerned about this. And I want to also say, we looked for a home before we moved from Tucson seven years ago. We looked for seven years. We are a homeschool family. We have raised four children. We still have two at home. We have children in sports. And we moved out here to teach our kids agricultural lifestyles, to have ag science, to grow organic vegetables, and to give our children a different way of life. It was different than the drive-by shooting that was in Tucson, when we lived in Tucson. And this was our dream. We looked for seven years in Cochise County. And there is growth happening. Pretty soon, unfortunately, whether we like it or not, Benson will be a suburb of bail, because people like me don't want our children harmed in Tucson. And I have been here seven and a half years now. And we, this was our dream, to grow our kids in a rural setting. This is our dream home. We come here, we see flags. It's okay to be excited about 4th of July here. That is not what Tucson has to offer. They have to offer decapitations, and crime, and machete attacks in Target. And you know what? This is where we chose to live, and this is our dream. And, you know what, we have a couple sayings in the group now. One man's job isn't worth another man's water. And there are people who have built equity in their homes for years by, with blood, sweat, and tears, and they're going to have to say goodbye to that. What happens when we can't sell our homes when the faucet doesn't turn on? And I want you to look at this portion of people. That is a small representative to the people that I talk to all the time on Facebook that are coming to me and saying, "Thank you for giving me a voice. Thank you for getting the information out." And here's my other question. How many other people in Benson don't know this is happening? This is right across the street from a nursing home. We need to take care of our elders. We need to take care of our children. They deserve us to be a voice. You know, I lost my father-in-law this year, and we sat by his bedside for a week, saying goodbye to him and walking him home. And you know what I see when I lose people in this life? They are not saying, "I wish I made another dollar." They're saying, "I wish I had more time." And I ask you to revoke and rescind the conditional use permit and take a vote on it, because right now, it's not looking like you guys represent the, the community of Benson. And my last question to you guys, my last question to you guys is, since this is a highly flammable plant, what is your evacuation time? If you were forced to evacuate the vicinity of Benson, how quickly could you get those people out? There's, like, I-10. We could either go to Douglas, or we could go to Wilcox, or we could go to Tucson. How quickly could you safely get people, if there was a fire? And that thing, there's, there's aluminum plant, like, fires all over the place. How quickly could you get the people to safety? Okay, we don't want another Colorado River situation. We don't want our place, our valley, poisoned. Please, rescind and revoke your, your conditional use permit. There are scared mothers, and we want to stay here. We bought our 150-acre farm, and we were never planning on leaving. This is our dream, and this is a lot of their dreams. Don't make us give up our dreams for 90 measly jobs. It's been a, it's been a long evening, I'm sure for you guys, more so than some of us. So thank you for your time, and I know you guys have had a lot of facts spit at you tonight, so I hope you're, I hope you're still with me, because I do, and I want to make this an agenda item somehow. I want to have at the end of this, our community, working with our city council, representing each other, having faith in each other. And I think the only way that we can possibly pursue that together is to look at the ways to repeal the vote that happened at the planning and zoning meeting on November 6, 2024. There, there are several options for that. One, clearly, they, I don't believe that they were qualified. That's no insult to them. This is a Title V permit company, industry. It is a big deal. You know, I didn't see any requests for a light study, a noise study, a pollution study, a water study. It didn't look like any of that was asked at the time. I don't know how they could have possibly been equipped, you know, to handle that. And then the precedent that it sets, sets for the, for the 88-foot, Benson doesn't want 88-foot high buildings. How are you ever going to be able to tell another industry no? If you told sort of this conglomerate of, of everything that you could stand against, if you told them yes, who could we possibly say no to? I did notice about a year before, in 2023, a Maverick sign was going before the, the planning and zoning in the action minutes and the approved minutes. And it seemed, and that was just a, they already had the sign. It was just to increase the height of the sign 14 more feet. And even in that one, there was a motion made. I don't know if the minutes are correct or not, but it said that the planning and zoning team, commission, would recommend the council approve it. And so to me, like, that's the direction, right? The people, we have, we should have the power. We pick you to, to hold our place of power for us, and other people get hired. It, it would be preposterous to me that you guys didn't have more power than, than the, the PZ. This is, this is no insult, I assure you. It, it's just a matter of trying to understand how we come back together. Because it, it's, it's really, you know, unfortunate to see this is a great community. I think you can tell that people love it. We need a hero, you know, and it might be you guys, because we don't want this in our community for so many reasons, so. I would like to understa- I did see online that the city has a Board of Appeals. It doesn't look like it's been used or met or nothing's been posted since 2022. But is that something that's available to the citizens? Is that a route? Help us, you know, to, to make our voices heard and, and to work together to get what's good for all of us. And, you know, maybe the citizens were asleep at the wheel, too, and the intent of posting is not to cover your, your heiny, right? It's to garner feedback and elicit feedback from your community. That, that's, that's the, the reason that we, we put the post up. I think it's clear, based on how much feedback you got back in 2024, that those posts did not reach anybody. And the, the PZ handbook says that they can, the city development director, can request additional, um, sources to get the word out. I think that that's another area where you can see, now that the word is out, there's so many people interested in this decision, and so I, I would like to, for you to consider adding, and, and I can go down and fill out the paperwork, too, but, um, how to, what that Board of Appeals looks like, if that's an avenue for us as citizens to, to try to help you. I, I imagine you're in a terrible position, and it's probably easier to talk to Aluminum Dynamics, but you are not their mayor and council. You are ours. And, and we want it, and we want to support you. And, and I think that's, that gets lost a little bit, too, and I think that you want to support us has been lost just a little bit in this. But if we could just try to get just a little bit back to who we are and our roots, and if you help us do this, I really think that, um, everybody, the respect can be returned. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I moved here 28 years ago, from Green Valley in Sarita, Arizona. I'm sure everybody knows where that is. I lived, as the crow flies, about two miles from an open-pit mine, Cypress Mine. Uh, actually, there were three mines in the town. There's Cypress, Sarco, and DeBol Mine. And I lived near Cypress. And, um, I was pregnant during 1997. Um, she was seven and a half months long. And I know you just spoke earlier about how you're for children and families. Well, I wish somebody would have said that in Green Valley in Sarita, but nobody did. So, at seven and a half months, I had a stillbirth. Her heart stopped beating. Went to the hospital. Doctor says she's dead. Soon after, I finally delivered her, and that was a long process. I was approached by a group of people, 75 people to be, that were in the whole group. 75 people came forth, and they had a class-action lawsuit against Cypress Mine. This is 1997. So I was told by a doctor to get tested. So we encouraged the group to get tested. Not everybody did, but there was 30 of us that did. All 30 were high in lead, cadmium, and aluminum. My daughter died because the doctor said the metal leached through my placenta and killed her. Like I said, this was 1997. I moved here 28 years ago. My experience was literally hell on earth. Now, I moved here to get away from a place like Cypress Mine. They had smelters. The EPA stepped in. EPA said, "You people are burning and polluting in 100 times excess of what you were allowed." What happened? Well, we didn't get to go to court. That didn't happen, because money talks. Lawyers had a lot of it. So that was pretty much, we went as far as we could. But the EPA stepped in and put a machine down in the Green Valley Library to measure the air quality, because it was so bad in Green Valley. They put a machine in that library so you could go in there and check the air quality on a daily basis. This was 28 years ago, and I don't believe the machine is there anymore. Because what happens is it just starts all over again. Some woman is going to lose her baby. And then what? Another stillbirth. A bunch of cancer patients. And we also had a lot of people that had Parkinson's. It's very common in, in that type of pollution area. So that's all I have to say. I hope you people really think about what you're doing. Thank you.
Hi again. Crystal Anderson, thank you for allowing me to speak as well. I have been down a, a lot of rabbit holes in the last three weeks. Um, one of them has been chasing Bill Glasser for some information that he just won't give me. And anytime we request from the city information, it seems to be stonewalled as well. So I went out on my own, and I talked to an engineer that builds cooling towers. And he knows everything about them, and he laughed when I said Bill Glasser said 5%. But they're going to reclaim 3% of that, so it's really 2% evaporate. And he laughed and said, "You can't reclaim evaporated water." And let me go ahead and tell you that with the dimensions from their permit application, he said that the evap rate would probably be 8%, if not more. He's going to get back to me with the numbers, and I plan on giving a full analysis to the city. Also, with that, when I was doing numbers with 5%, it came out to over 1,200 homes a year worth of water. And if my calculations are wrong, please tell me, is that bigger than 90? Because I don't think 90 jobs are going to pay for 1,200 homes. I don't think it's going to pay for the resources that this company is going to take out of our state. It's just like Wilcox and their Alphata fields, and they're shipping them to Saudi Arabia. So they're going to be taking all of our resources and shipping their product out of state as well. Why does Arizona have to keep supplying everything for the rest of the world? We need to supply for our town. We need to supply for Benson, not for Mississippi. And I think it's really important for you guys to consider this. Instead of being good for Mississippi, let's be good for Benson.
Oh, Kenny again. Yes, it's me, I'm back. I think whenever you guys take on a project, you guys ought to do your homework. Okay? Example, maybe go down to the international border where Canton is, and just sit there with a lounge chair and watch all the pollution that comes across the border. Because you know why? They don't regulate it, not like we do. You know? And if you think it's a good idea to put this aluminum plant, go to Hila Bend where the town kicked them out, like we're going through right now. Okay? And ask them why. The reason why is because nobody wants it. And the town before that, the same thing. This is an unwanted thing. And I don't know why you guys are trying to put a square cube in a round hole. It's, it's not going to work. You guys really need to do your homework. Do some impact studies. See what it does to the environment. Think about the future generations that are going to live here. Think about the people that are going to die. All because of 90 people being unemployed. I mean, this, I think a third grader could have done a better job than what you guys decided. Because at least they know right from wrong. You guys really need to pull these permits. Because if not, go, go up to Hila Bend and find out what happened to their town. Same thing's going to happen to Benson. They're going to, we're going to rear our ugly head. You woke up a sleeping bear. And that's all I get to say.
Good evening again, mayor and council. Uh, let's see, some of this may be repetitive, I apologize. But I'd like to say not bringing this important project before the council for a public hearing with discussion was very upsetting and disheartening for Benson residents. This is your role in representing them. The online petition opposing the aluminum plant has now reached one thousand five hundred and ninety-four signatures. It's not too late to make this right. Aluminum Dynamics materially misrepresented the facts during the November sixth, two thousand twenty-four planning and zoning hearing. A question was asked, what, quote, what will be emitted from the stacks? End quote. Aluminum Dynamic President, Mr. Pushes responded, quote, warm air, but clean air? End quote. This could not be further from the truth. Per Aluminum Dynamics application with A D E Q for a Title V permit, they included multiple pages of chemicals that could be emitted from this secondary smelter. A few of the over forty potential harmful chemicals being emitted throughout the different plant processes are carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide, nitrogen oxides, volatile organic compounds, metal hazardous pollutants and greenhouse gases. Aluminum Dynamics has admitted that some of these chemicals will exceed thresholds in a twenty-four hour period. That's also on their A D E Q application. When researching Aluminum Dynamics' parent company Steel Dynamics, ninety-three violations are listed by their subsidiaries and over eleven and a half million in fines. The violations include water pollution, air pollution, environmental violations, and ninety-three safety-related offenses. Is this the type of corporation that makes a great neighbor? Absolutely not. Please do the right thing and do not allow Aluminum Dynamics to make a home in Benson while destroying this wonderful town. And the very last thing I would ask is if anyone opposed, would please stand? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I, I had a long speech in my phone. Not going to bother with that. They've talked about everything that I won't talk about. I want to talk about the elderly folks. My mom's a hospice nurse here in the county, Mary Ann Young. Show of hands, how many people are over the age of seventy in here? Look at that. Thank you. Yeah, a lot of them don't have social media. A lot of them, they don't have the Herald, they don't have online access, they don't subscribe to it. So the way that you informed our town is unacceptable. It really is. I've been informing my neighbors. Ray? Ray, raise your hand. This man right here, Ray, I just met him. He's one of my neighbors. Great man. Him and his wife Bonnie had no clue about this. I found out June twenty-fourth. I, I just think it's unacceptable. The, you got to inform us. You have our addresses, you send us property tax bills, send us a letter. I live about halfway up the Hill in the Heights off of Silverwood on Hillcrest. I have a perfect view of the San Pedro River, of the train bridge, everything. It's going to be ruined. What do you think that's going to do to my property tax value? Yeah. Um, it's going to kill my value. I don't want this. I don't want this for any of these people. And if you are going to go forward with this, start informing the elderly so they can make plans to get out of here. A lot of people moved here for clean air. Their doctors recommend them to move here. It's, it's important what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Please go to nobensonaluminumplant.org for additional information. Have a good night.